All right, are we ready? Pat, you got the short straw. You got the short straw. You guys on? You ready? All right, oh. You can stand, you can sit, you can... Yeah, this is very informal. But yeah, um, let's just get started. Thank you guys all for showing up tonight. And I know we're competing with Representative Eveslin's town hall down the street, which is, uh... We gotta do a better job with coordinating, but, um... He texted this morning to apologize. I said, you know, how are we to know who's doing what? And town halls are not something that happens regularly, so... But, you know, we started doing... By the way, I'm Mel Raposo, and I, again, thank you all for coming. Thanks to Huike and KKCR, who are, they're live streaming this broadcast as we speak. Uh, the whole purpose of this town hall meetings, um, is really to engage with the community and find out if there are any issues or concerns in your, in your communities that, uh, needs to get our attention. And, you know, we often get calls, uh, from people that are frustrated, um, because their issues aren't being resolved, or... You know, I tell people all the time that, on the county council, and I think Joanne can appreciate this, is we don't know what we don't know. If, if no one brings it to our attention, then we just don't know. And oftentimes, people will call the, the different departments, or they'll call the state agencies, and maybe they're not satisfied with the responses, and, and then they just give up. But, uh, so this is an opportunity for the communities to share issues or concerns as we approach the budget session. We'll get the mayor's budget, um, on March fifteenth, and then we, we start our budget reviews at the end of March. Uh, and basically, we go through each department and, uh, take a look at the budget and, and, uh, make sure that we are providing the necessary resources for this county to operate. Uh, but this is also an opportunity that there are needs in the communities that we are not looking at, or we just don't know about it, and that needs to be addressed. This is an opportunity for you all to share it with us, so we can, um, if necessary, put it in the budget, uh, to get these things accomplished. So, um, the format is very informal. Uh, you know, you just come up and share what's on your mind. Uh, this is not a town hall where, you know, I, I'll tell you what we're doing, or what my position is on certain issues. Uh, this is really for you folks to have a platform to share what's, what's on your minds and, and issues in your communities that, uh, may require our attention, so... Uh, with that, um, and I have a list here, so if, if you haven't signed up, uh, you can come up and sign up. But again, very informal, and we'll start off with former mayor, former council member Joanne Kimura. No, 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 no chairs, uh... Where's the chair? What happened to the chair? We make it very difficult, so you don't sit too long, and...
I noticed.
Sorry about that, Joanne, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Yeah, thank you, Chair Raposo, and aloha everyone. Um, I thank you for holding this meeting, and I want to speak on two issues that I think are very important to the people of Kauai. One is curbside recycling as one of the main sustainable ways to divert materials from our landfill. And two is the dangerously poor condition of county roads. And so, my first request is to please fund construction plans for a material recovery facility, which is where the recyclables are brought, cleaned, sorted, and they become usable for it to be made into new materials. I, I know I'm speaking to the choir when I say it's so urgent and important to divert materials from the landfill. Short term, we have to stretch the life of our present landfill as long as possible. And long term, diversion will decrease the operating and capital costs of the landfill and the new landfill, and it will increase the life of the new landfill, saving a lot of money for taxpayers. So, in 2019, the mayor and the council could have funded construction plans for a MRF. Um, a conceptual plan had been finished, an environmental se- assessment had resulted in a FANCY, or a finding of no significant impact, and the next step was construction plans, which would then have made the MRF shovel-ready for federal monies that have become so plentiful through the, um, Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, federal law at the level. However, the plans were not funded la- in 2019 or any year since then. Instead, the mayor and the council funded a waste-to-energy feasibility study. And, um, five years later, we still don't have an answer about whether there is a waste-to-energy model, model that's feasible for Kauai. And now the county's working on an RFP, which is backwards, because the county cannot do an effective RFP, Request for Proposal, unless it knows what it wants. And at a minimum, a waste-to-energy proposal needs to meet four criteria. One, KIUC has to express an intention to provide a power purchase agreement. Two, there is a working model in a community about the size of, uh, Kauai that shows there will be no pollution. And there's a working model in a community about the size of Kauai that shows per ton, the, shows that the per ton cost to taxpayers will be less than the per ton cost of landfilling or the per ton cost of other usable diversions, such as curbside recycling. And fourth, the proposal meets the general plan, number-one goal of Kauai being a sustainable island. And I don't believe there exists a waste-to-energy model that meets these four criteria. And if the construction plans for a MRF had been funded in 2019, we would have an operating curbside system today, five years later. So, we can't delay anymore. I know there are some outstanding issues with respect to the Awhakini site, but I think those could have been solved by now if there had been a commitment of the mayor and council to work on a MRF, rather than waste-to-energy. Um, curbside recycling will increase our diversion rate, our county consultants have said, at a minimum to forty-eight percent from presently forty-three percent. And, um, this is an increase of five percent where, for the past seven years, we even ha- we haven't had even a one percent increase in our diversion rate. And I think, um, our, the increase will be more, because the five percent is only dealing with residential, um, curbside recycling, and I think there's gonna be, if we do a MRF, a bigger commercial recycling as well. And my second request is to ensure that the county road resurfacing program is funded sufficiently to be a preventive maintenance program, which, um, is the most cost-effective. So, when Glenn Nickens, uh, was still alive, and Larry Dill and Lyle Tabata were county engineer and deputy, they did a county-wide assessment of county roads, and it showed that we had a hundred-million-dollar backlog in road repairs. Those of us on the council worked hard to get the GET excise tax, and I was really happy to hear that recently the council heard a report from the roads division that we are on track to remove the backlog in ten years. From the standpoint of residents in Kupolo, where I lived, I have to say that Kapena and Makoi streets do not show signs that our resurfacing program is working. In some of the, in some parts of the streets, there is grass growing, um, through the worn pavement. And I'm hopeful, I'm summarizing now, Chair, um, I'm hopeful that we will see a change soon. Much as we are seeing in our state highways, there's so much resurfacing, um, action. It looks like Larry Dill, uh, the Kauai District Engineer, really is applying what he learned when he was county engineer, and good for him. And I look forward to driving on really smoothly paved county roads, just like we are experiencing on state highways now. And I just leave you with these, uh, four questions that I would like to have answered. What is the amount of the backlog at this time, in dollars? Two, how is preventive maintenance incorporated into the county's program? Um, it's a, it's a great, um, it's great to work on the worst roads first, which I hear is being done, but the county will never catch up if it's only working on the worst roads. And then, is the source of money presently allocated for county roads sufficient to catching up? And lastly, where is Kapena and Makoi streets on the resurfacing list? Thank you very much.
It's probably ahead of the Wailea House lots where I live, that, um, we need some repairs over there as well. So, I joke about that, you know, people say, oh, the politicians' roads, all nice. Well, not mine. The, the house lots need some work, but, um, yeah.
But I think you're gonna find a lot of people's roads need work.
You know, I, I will say that, you know, the GET obviously is the source of funding, the majority of the funding, and, uh, with, you know, with the influx of money that we got from GET, uh, with the, with the record-breaking numbers in tourism spending that we see on the island, that all equates to a larger influx of GET as well as TAT. Uh, Councilman Kagawa has been really harsh on administration as far as paving these roads, and I know that they have been paving. It's, it's difficult, because you can only pave so much. I mean, you got, you got, uh, restrictions on, not so much now, but, uh, early on in the materials and contractors. That can, you, you know, you gotta get the people to do the roads. So, we have the list, Joanne, you know this, we have the, the road paving list, and we'll, we'll see that when we get through the budget process, but, um, it's, it's... I think you're right, I don't think we'll ever catch up. And I think the, the bigger problem is, when you talk about the preventive maintenance, I think when we build these roads, when we resurface these roads, we gotta resurface it right. We gotta make sure we get the, the, the shoulders correct, so that, you know, when you're just putting asphalt over old asphalt, and you're not doing the curb, uh, the, the shoulder work, then you're just opening yourself up for more damage, and especially with the rainy seasons here, so... Your points are well taken, um, I, I...
Well, they're Glenn Nickens' points, right?
Exactly, and...
And they're like, at least ten years or more now.
Probably more, probably more, and...
But, but you know, your point, I mean, is the limiting factor contractors, or is it money? Um, because we are, unless we do timely preventive maintenance, the bill will get bigger and bigger.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's kicking the can down to our kids.
I agree. And, um, you know, we try our best here, and you know how it works, right? It's, it's, we can, we can ask, and we can ask, we can ask, and, you know, the, the administration is responsible for executing the roadwork. And the funding, I, I can sit here today and tell you that the funding is not the issue, because we, we have had that influx of GET. The thing we've gotta be cognizant about is, where you gotta call your representatives and your senator, is they are talking about getting rid of the, the GET, right? It was a ten-year sunset date, in other words, in ten years, it goes away. And that's gonna be, that's gonna cripple the counties if that happens, so... We really gotta make sure we, we keep that, that, uh, GET tax in there, the surcharge for our roads. So, that's, that's on the horizons. Uh, real quick, on the solid waste, Joanne, I think you hit all the points, uh, on the head. You know, in the, in the extension permit for the, uh, for DLNR to expand or extend the life of the existing landfill, one of the requirements was we had to have a plan for a MRF. So, that is in place, and I think the administration is actually looking at, at moving forward on that. I think the curbside recycling is the low-hanging fruit. It's not the cheapest, but, you know, you either pay now or you pay later, right? And, and we're paying today because of the lack of action in the past. And I, and, you know, I, I, I'm responsible, I was here. Uh, and, uh, I think we all learn a lot in going forward, and I think right now, to expand, uh, extend the life of the landfill, I think the curbside recycling is, is, is something that we, we need to do a- as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, Cody Kimura? Yeah, please. Oh, and by the way, I did wanna recognize Pat Porter's here from the administration. I joked with him, he picked the short straw, so he had to come. The mayor has made his department heads available for all of the town halls that we're holding, so, tonight it's Pat's turn. Um, and if you have any issues that you want us to track for you, so if you come up with an issue or concern, and you want to, uh, be, kept abreast of what, what we're doing to make sure that it gets accomplished, um, Ally has the, the sheet, just give us your contact information, and we'll make sure that you're in the loop. In other words, you'll get all copies of all the communications that we send across to the agencies that are responsible, whether it be our, our county administration, the state, or the federal government, so... Thanks, Cody.
So, um, thanks for having us here, but, you know, we just, uh, came to basically clear the air on the last meeting with the, um, um, Jeremiah and the Kikaua boating commercial, you know, use, I think, uh, Kikiola. I was hoping more of the council members were gonna be here, because, you know, we hear, we heard the, we saw the meeting, and it was just, we heard their concerns, and, you know, they're right, in a lot of ways. In a lot of ways, what they don't realize is like, people like me, I own one of the companies, and people like Koa, he owns one of the companies, you know, and they're, just what, what was said that day about, um, you know, the permitting and, and everything that was... But, um, yeah. But, um, yeah, I was pretty upset, to be honest, um. You know, listening to Councilman Costa, what he was saying about the, you know, staying three percent and whatnot. It's a lot more than that, you know, and, um, the communication between the commercial boaters and the recreational users is something that we had to take into our own hands. So, we just started the Kikiola Boaters Alliance, right? And what that does is all the Kikaua permit holders on the West Side, because we cannot get any communication through the state, you know, like, we talked to Jeremiah, Jeremiah tries to bring to the state, but then when all the fishermen come, and they can complain, there's no communication between the two of us. So, we just started this nonprofit alliance, right? So, we, basically, if there's any issues with what happens, we, we, as the commercial, so, you know, how, how we're put, we would take matters into our own hands and try and, you know, help out. So, one of them was the, oh, um, Councilman Kagawa was talking about, you know, the not having space for commercial fish, I mean, for recreational fishermen and whatnot, right? So, a lot of things, like, we spray painted the, the cleats red, not to use, you know, so... Yeah, we, I don't know, whatever, I'll get it, I don't think lost, I'm trying to talk.
I'm kinda surprised you had a...
I know, I was so upset, but, um...
No, I think, you know, let me just, Cody, uh, speak real quick, um... I, I think communication is key, whether it's state, county, federal government, and I think the Kikiola... First of all, let me say thank you for, for doing that alliance, uh, and getting the boaters together to, you know, work with the, for the community. I think that is the key. I, I think in every industry, and I mean, we, we saw what hap- you know, I think the Honolulu boating industry decades ago, um, started the, the trend of, you know, that boating was bad, and, and I think the, the... What the council was trying to get a briefing on is how can we have that balance, where the commercial boaters can operate? And I'm not gonna speak for any of the council members and what they said, but how can the commercial boaters operate and not take away from the, the community's ability to use their resource?
I agree.
And I think, from what I understood after the meeting, and I did speak to you, but, um, the community is, is feeling like there is an effort being made between the boaters at Kikiola and the community to make sure that everyone has the ability to use the resource. So, for that, I thank you guys, 'cause I know it's not easy.
You know, it's, uh, it's, it's misled a lot, like, we do a lot more for the community than, we don't ask for, hey, look what we did. You know, we do a lot, so, being that the boaters, the companies would do things separate, we figured if we built this alliance and we represent something, you know, and, you know, we put out the fishing tournaments, or like that fishing tournament that Mr. DeCosta was talking about, right? You know, we went with Earnman, and we told him, hey, you know what, we will shut down all of our operations, you know? Now, if we, if they have to go to the state, we'd be on big ordeal, right? Talk to Jeremiah, we'd be like, oh, okay, you guys have a sign. No, so, us as the boater, the commercial boating community, we, we're willing to do whatever we have to, right? But with no one, well, like, there's no meetings between us and the state, or us and the county. So, I really wish we were here when that meeting was going on, because Jeremiah, you know, did a pretty good job, you know, backing us up, I should say. Like, you know, when, uh, Councilman Kagawa was saying, oh, so when these guys are done with their businesses, should be put back into a lottery to where, you know, other people can do it, right? Or else, how, how does someone go and buy this permit? Koa and I started from the bottom, from the bottom, bottom, paid whatever we could to buy those permits. So, you know, when you sell these permits, it's, you're selling one company, you're selling your, your blood, sweat, and tears behind them. So, there's so much miscommunication, and I would love to sit down with the council members and talk one-on-one, so they know exactly what we go through to have what we have. And I'm not saying we have much, you know, we, I currently employ forty-seven local people from the West Side community, you know? And they just, the West, it's only a few bad complaints that make it seem that we are the devil, and it's amazing that. So, I'm just saying that, you know, if we can somehow talk to the council members one-on-one, and, you know, let them know exactly what, we, we're willing to do anything to make it easier. You know, we're willing, we, we trying on our own to not have these complaints, 'cause right now, the complaints go to DLNR or the state, or to you guys, and then it just gets left there. No one tells us nothing, right? Until the state's like, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. No, but if they tell us off the get-go, now that we have this alliance, I just hope you guys can know that, you know, you can count on us to figure out the problem within and fix it. So, please reach out to us, or if you have any type of concern, or problems, or complaints, and, and we will try our best to try and nip it, you know, before it gets to the point where, you know, it's, we get these crazy meetings where no one can represent us, that people are just, you know, saying what they feel, or what they know, I should say, not exactly what it is, what they know, or what they feel, because I was just, saw it, so much in my mind coming in, and I, I just, yeah.
Okay. Typically, when we get a complaint that involves DLNR, or, that's where we send it.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we'll get the information from you and the alliance, so that if, if in fact we do receive complaints involving the boating operations out at, um, Kukuiola or Kikiola, that we will, um, make sure we, we, we let you guys know.
Yeah, we, we, we'll do whatever we can.
Yeah. And, you know, I, and that's a great segue of why, you know, the other council members aren't here. And imagine if we had seven council members here tonight, we would not be done by seven o'clock. And, you know, I, I got criticized for that, and I, about, you know, how come just you? This is not a Mel Raposo thing. The, the reason we have staff here is the staff's the one really gonna take the information. And by the way, we have Addison Bulisans staff member here, Yvette, thank you for being here. So, yeah, the, the whole purpose was to, exactly what we're doing right now, is so that we understand if there's any issues or concerns, and then we will follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not an opportunity for me to tell you guys what I'm gonna do, or what the council is gonna do. This, this is pretty much a listening session, so, that is good information to know, and, um, and I think at some point, we, we will have a follow-up meeting with Jeremy, uh, Jer- Jeremiah from DLNR. And, uh, at that point, you guys will be able to come up and, and...
Yeah, it'd be good to hear, you know, like I said, so it's not just one-sided. I would love to be able to, you know, put our input in, so, we can give you guys real facts. You know, we had met, um, meetings with senators that would tell us these numbers that was way off, I mean, like, hundreds of thousands off, you know? So, I just feel, like I said, the lack of communication between what's actually happening and what people think is happening, that needs to be amended, you know? So, this alliance that we created, we have all facts, so, you know, if anything does come up, please, you know, please reach out, and we would be more than welcome, we're happy to solve anything we can internally before it has to get to this point, where we gotta go fly to Honolulu and fight all these bills, and it's just, it's just crazy.
Okay, so, yeah, before you leave, make sure you stop, check with Ally, and she can take the information down.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh, Koa, did you have anything to add?
Um, I think me and Cody and, uh, Jesse pretty much had the same points, it sounded like we wasted too much time. But I think, um, yeah, it was a lot of misunderstanding with the last meeting, and I think, uh, it's pretty important, if, you know, any questions, that we all have a meeting together, kind of just clear the air, and, you know, answer any questions anybody had. Uh, we just kind of felt it was kind of like a one-sided meeting, where we was kind of being put down, and we wasn't there to defend ourselves, you know? So, it'd be nice to meet everybody and kind of square things away, it'd be good.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is a good opportunity to talk about our Sunshine Law, because the Sunshine Law is one of the most ridiculous... Now, I shouldn't say the, the Sunshine Law, I think that it's a great law, but I think some of that law is, is bad. And the, the bad part about that law is the, the prohibition of council members to meet with community groups with more than two council members. That's, that's prohibited. So, uh, anyone has an opportunity, organizations, um, have, they have an opportunity to meet with council members two at a time. Uh, and I can, I can tell you that, with this council and all the councils I've worked with, um, if, if you wanna set up a meeting, especially like for you guys out in, at the harbor, uh, just set it up with our staff, and, and they'll put the two, they'll, they'll set all of that stuff up, and then the council members will be able to go out there two at a time. And you gotta repeat yourself four times, but...
Tomorrow at four P.M.
Tomorrow at four P.M. That might, might be a little, well, y'all meeting tomorrow. Yeah, I saw that, I saw that tomorrow. Uh, but if you guys just wanna have that informal session, or, or talk starter with the council members, yeah, reach out to our staff, and, and they'll, they'll coordinate all that for you. And, uh, I think the council members all, they, you know, they'd be willing to come out. Definitely become, willing to come out. 'Cause I go back to what I said earlier, we don't know what we don't know. All right, um, Patrick? Patrick?
Um, I'm actually here to support Jill's.
Okay. Okay, well, Jill?
Chair Raposo.
Hi, Jill.
Thank you for doing this. So, uh, I, this is my second one I've been to, first one in Kilauea, obviously about Resilient Center, but today, I wanna talk about homeless housing. Um, there was a recent conversation about maybe exploring some donated land, uh, to build the monolithic dome, um, uh, homes, small homes, uh, for our homeless. And I still feel that that's not only an incredibly critical need, but it's also very doable. And so, I'd like to propose the council to consider an amount of money that they would be willing to match, either a Ni'oh or a larger fundraising effort, to bring that to fruition, perhaps on a five-acre test model. But I think our homeless kapuna and our homeless moms with children deserve that. And I think it's a pretty easy lift, based on our stakeholder partners that we have. Uh, and, that's it. We've had a conversation, but I think it's doable.
And I agree, I agree. So, um, Joanne, you don't miss this stuff, Joanne, I'm sure you've missed this, yeah? So...
I know, just thinking.
So, the, the council funds, you know, we put the, put money in a budget, and, and I think I've shared with, with you, Jill, that we really gotta have the discussion with the housing agency, and we, we gotta get buy-in from them.
Right.
And, you know, I think the council would, right now, I think the council, they're open to any suggestions or opportunities to deal with the homeless situation. I think the monolithic domes, uh, are a great potential solution. I know there are landowners that I have spoken to, that if the plan is right, they would definitely be willing to donate. The, the question is, is the administration willing to move forward and, and, and do it? But form the partnership, the public-private partnership? Um, and I think if the plan is right, and, and it's a doable plan, that I, I do believe that we could get the support.
So, question, um, that's all good. What's next step to get it done?
The next step is, we have your information, I think, you get her information, right? Yeah, she's like, yeah. I think the next step is to sit down with the administration and have that discussion.
Okay.
And we can coordinate that with Kipu Kailua, who's our housing chair, and myself, and we just have the discussion.
Can I count on that getting put together? Do I need to do that, or is...
No, we'll do that, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that. So, just, um, you got that, she's Allison. But, oh, by the way, Allison, my gosh. I'm sorry, we should introduce the staff, Lyndon here. They're the ones that do all the magic over here.
All right, thanks.
So, yeah, we'll work on that, and we'll, we'll try to go ahead and, um, Joanne? The plan, that's what I, you know? Well, I mean, the budget proposal would be nice, but it comes, you know, it brings me back to the, before Pat's time, so, uh, you know, Pat, Pat is not to blame. But, you know, the council felt that we needed to put a bathroom at the soccer fields at Vidina Stadium. And we funded that, but the council funded that, but the administration at the time did not feel it was appropriate and never built it. So, we can go through the motions and take the money and put it aside in a budget, but if we're not gonna move forward, then that's money that we cannot use for other projects. So, you know, as I get older in this job, I, 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 you know, we wanna make sure that when we, when we put aside money for the budget, that it's going to, it's gonna be used, so, um...
I am hoping that what you said earlier, that they would do just about anything to address the homeless situation, that this would be considered a viable option.
I think it's a viable option. Um, I, I think, I mean, there are many options out there, but I think, based on the work that you have done, out, at a Ni'oh, I think... Um, I, I think, I mean, there are many options out there, but I think, based on the work that you have done out, at Ninahoe, I think, I think it's, it's probably more viable than ideas. Cause I got a lot of ideas too, but it's, you know, yeah, let's go get the expandable homes, let's go get the, the small mini homes. I, I mean, who's gonna build them, who's gonna, I mean, I think you, you know.
I can take care of that.
Right, so, yeah, we'll get that scheduled and then we'll let you know.
All right, thanks, sir.
Did you wanna come up?
Sure, whatever.
Why not?
Um, yeah, the only thing I, and I'm gonna reiterate this at the budget meeting, but, um, I know in the past, council has supported the Red Cross. Um, but even more so, I think going forward, if, and if there anything good can be come out of Lahaina, um, we've doubled, actually over, um, more than doubled our volunteer cadre. So, but prior to all that, we had about sixty volunteers, now we have over a hundred and twenty. Um, and that just means more work. Most of the stuff that the county council has earmarked for Red Cross has usually gone to administrative costs. Um, and now, it's, it's still just me on the job, so going forward, it would be great if we could use that money for either an assistant or some other volunteer work, uh, so that we, we can work with those volunteers and involve them and really work with them the way we need to, to make sure that they stay on board, um, they stay active, so.
Okay, and then that is where Joanne's, I think, uh, comment on a proposal of, of what we're, um, what, what you guys are looking at, I think. I'm not sure if you submitted that across, you guys, you guys just apply for a grant?
Yeah.
With the county, is that how it works, or is it?
It is, and, and I know that we did it a couple of years ago and normally we're like a line item under Akima.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't know if it's the same from year to year, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with, with the Kima funding and what, um, so you're, you're basically asking that it be allowed to be used for administrative purposes?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it is, but it's just critical that we get that now, so.
Okay. Nope, thank you. Thanks, thanks for coming. There we go, K K C R, Kiki, do you guys have anything?
No, I have a signing sheet.
Well, I mean, by the way, we are live on K K C R and Hoikee, so, uh. Annie?
No, that's.
Oh, that's you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Joan? Thanks Cody. Joan Heller? Oh, okay. James Alalain?
Hey, what's up, man? Thanks for coming, guys.
Did you find out anything about that, uh?
The sandbag thing?
Yeah, man, it was all, it was all approved and.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
The state approval? And the high water mark, did they?
Yeah, uh, you know, all we got back from the state was it was permitted and it was, it was allowed. And, you know, that, that's a difficult thing of being on a county council at times, because, you know, we, we cannot control the actions of what the other agencies do.
So the state and county are two different entities, yeah?
Different entity, different jurisdiction, and, um, yeah, I mean, that's just kind of how it works. And, uh, I'm going on a, I'm going on a site visit on March fourth, I think, out on the North Shore. We'll walk and, we'll walk that entire coastline, because there's a lot of violations that are occurring, I think, that are being allegedly occurring. So, you know, it, it's, as you can imagine, James, it's frustrating when, when you see what you see and you find out that variants were granted, um, by the state.
Yeah.
And there's very little that we can do. And, but we'll see, and I think that's, I'm assuming, based on what I'm hearing, that we'll, we'll see some, some violations out there that we can, we hope that the Dylan R. will, will address.
Yeah, well, just, it just seems that kind of remind me when, when growing up, they always tell you, you know, if you get one problem, one question, you always ask the teacher, right?
Yeah.
Ask Bush, yeah? Because when you ask questions, they're always gonna tell you, don't ask questions right now, right? So, that's why, you know, I'm mostly on the sovereignty side, right? Because, uh, all this stuff going on, it's all B S. I mean, everybody fighting for everything else but for, like, the land's been sold. I mean, how, how can they sell land that don't belong to them? And with the, um, the one everybody think it's a so what letter, it's a public law. I mean, it's public law, the president has signed on. And so I was looking, because I was so mad at these people always telling me, public law, so what, it's so what letter? Then if that's the case, how come there's so much other public laws? American Indian laws against burials and things. And there are, Americans don't even like to touch the burials, but it's law. And some of that American Indian law took us under their wings too. It stated, I got the papers at home, it stated, even the Hawaiian culture is involved with this law. But yet, they still touch our ivy, our kapuna, Kokopam, they, they destroyed it already. And that place is cursed, full on, you wait till when they start, things gonna happen, no, no, and don't tell me I never tell you guys, it's gonna happen. So, that's, I don't understand, you know? This is, how can you sell one, one whole island? The island is one whole unit, it's sort of like one of our own country. How can you separate and sell all this land? And the truth is to that, I can tell you the truth to that is because of the overthrow. They wanted to control everything. So when they gave themselves their own titles and stuff like that, that's how they sell all this land. They don't have no titles. If you check and you read all the history and everything is stated, they don't have titles. It took us by under force, the military, so it's all illegal already. And then another thing, Mel, let erip. I know, I'm on my rampage right now, but anyway. On March, no, not March, uh, it was, uh, January, New Year started, right? I went to Hoikee. My truck got broken into and it took my phone and my money that was inside my truck, but out of Hoikee. So today, I told myself that when I catch these guys, I know one of them already, when I catch them, I'm gonna make them.
I would just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This is big recording.
Yeah, I know. And to me, to me, you know, it's the truth, I just speaking the truth, that's how I feel. They're, they're, it's just like they'd rape me. I mean, I feel raped when they go inside my truck and they take my, my money. That's all the money I had, cause I'm not working, I'm disabled, and all the money that I had. And they take my phone, which now I cannot even call emergency if something happened to me. I just had on stroke, good thing I had my phone with me. But what can I say, right? It's my Cuniesians, the ones that took them, because my uncle seen them across the road, had three of them. So, I know one of them, I don't catch the other two yet, but I'm not gonna say what, like you said.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I know one of them already, I just try to keep up with him now. So, you know, I, I said, I don't really understand the state or the county, you know? We know because of the president, uh, Clinton had already signed that bill and it's public law. And if you look, a lot of people say public law is public law, you know, it's, it's B S. But half of the American law is all public law and it's still law? How come only the, the Hawaiian apology letter one doesn't matter? Huh? Ours no matter, then the American ones no matter, right? They law to the public law that they cite. So I think that is all.
Yeah, I think we gotta have our attorneys here when, when we get that.
I know, I know, yeah, I know.
Uh, I'm not gonna touch that with a ten foot pole, only cause I just do not have the legal knowledge to, to answer that. But I, I, I hear you, man, and, and we hear it from a lot of people.
And everything being sold from under us, I mean, the other people come moving in, they, they look at us like we rubbish to them. We're not rubbish, bro, it's just that, you know, we look at, you know? We're looking given the local style, eh? So, I, I don't understand, when the new people come live here, they, they bring all the attitude, but yet, we have to be nice. I don't wanna be nice anymore, Mel. I don't want to, I'm tired of being nice. When you be nice, they, they take advantage of you, more is they gonna get, more they gonna steal from you. You know, I'm tired already, I'm tired, I have on stroke, I don't wanna deal with any more problems with, but it's just, just keep on. Every day you see that, every day you see different faces, all the, 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 kind of face, grouchy kind of face, you know? But anyway, that's my rant then, ready for?
All right, James, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. Um. Noel? Oh, you told us the signing sheet, okay. You sure? You can talk about anything you want. Okay. Elizabeth?
Oh, okay, since I have a sign up sheet.
Why not? Look, you guys, I mean, Joanne left.
Yeah.
Actually, she had another commitment, so she, she asked us to speak, uh, early.
I like how she sits in the audience and how we all pay homage.
She's on mostly every picture on the walls up here, you know, she's been around forever. She's an amazing person, by the way.
She's been here longer than I, but I've been here almost half a century. I'm a teacher, I was, I'm retired. I'm here to talk about something that's been brought up, which is communication. And I'm kind of nervous, so I'm gonna read a little bit, cause I talk too much when I'm, got the teacher on. So, I'm requesting that you, Mr. Raposo, the county council, the mayor and the planning commission, put into motion a system to, that will post the island's infrastructure that they're proceeding on, that's in place. Because what I've done since October of last year, I have found out that the administration has a lot of programs and a lot of plans and they're in motion. The timeframes change, but they're in motion. I also understand, and I've been able to read, a lot of accounts of these plans that have their action dates, their priorities, their, all the procedures that are needed to get it accomplished. And I gotta say, as a teacher, I gotta commend the written reports, they're wonderful. But they're long and they're involved. And my request is to have all the plans presented in one online document that would allow laypeople like me to know more clearly the scope of the action and when our county is taking those, so that I can be provided with a user friendly way to understand what the infrastructure is. This is, this is what I get from council members when I wrote to y'all in October. I'm just gonna quote, one person said to me, oh, that's a big comprehensive request to ask for one place to put all these, these, uh, pers- these plans in place so we can see. Because we have this periodic schedule for large studies and we participate and we're a small island and we're built on a perimeter of a circle with limited revenue generation and overwhelming infrastructure environmental regulations designed for a continent. Okay, that's the end of the quote. My response is, all the more reason to stop, look and listen if it's, when it's necessary to trim down those regulations to fit to our demographics. We're not a continent, we are limited, so that doesn't work for me. Then, another council person says Kauai has a limited three million dollar worth of deferred maintenance and infrastructure needs with seventy three thousand people living in it and the visitor industry is our largest, largest financial contributor. Great, super, I heard you say a little earlier, we have money. Then I hear another quote, this is not a simple problem, but it's the elephant in the room? And I don't get that. I don't understand why it's an elephant in the room when all I'm asking for is communication. So that I as a laypeople don't have to go here, it's like getting a teacher. Oh, let me pick up this for English, oh, let me add this to it, and then I'll add a little of this. It's a copacahy thing that a layperson can't do. We don't have the time and we don't have the expertise. And what it means to me is at this point, I'm requesting that the county government inform its citizens and its visitors of the current state of the infrastructure developments, all the projects that you have ongoing, so that we can understand the workings and understand what you're doing for us, the Ina, and for our quality of life. Because we all know that there is truly the increasing statistical certainty that we need to maintain viable roads, water, drainage, emergency services, routes. We need the collective infrastructure so that I can understand it and I don't have to go every place to understand it. So, I'm just saying, it's a logical step to put in motion online a county information site that will give me the avail, the consolidated document of the roads, the water, what you're doing, so I know and I believe that you're working in my behalf. And I can't, it, does it make sense what I said?
I just wanna get, yeah, I think you just, you just answered my question that I was going to ask about what type of, and you were saying the roads, the water, infrastructure.
Yeah, I don't wanna know about the accidents.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, one thing that happened to me just recently is I go to Poifpu three days a week to swim. So does the mayor sometimes to surf. And when I went the other day, a Kalahale person was killed, right before me. There are no sidewalks, you know, it's infrastructure. I don't wanna know about the accident, I wanna know about when the sidewalks are going in, when, when the stoplights are going in and who's doing the water thing, it's, okay.
No, good, good question, and I know, as far as Pat, maybe you can help me with this, or what's the name of the, the, the system that we have in place that the public can go on and check all the roads and the projects? What is it called? Yeah, it's the limbs, but what's the name of that, or the website? We'll get that to you, um, but there, there's a, there's a site that you can go on now and, and all of the infrastructure projects are there, the roads projects are there.
For this county?
For this county.
In a timely, daily fashion, or is it like for the next six months?
No, it's, it shows the current progress, um, and I don't know why, um, son of a gun. Just the wor- just the roads.
But see, that's just roads.
Yeah, no, no, but.
See, what I find is that the roads, the water, I see, you know, I'm not saying what I see, I just wanna know what's happening. But I want it all in valet, you know, valet when we make our, valet to weave it together in a fashion allowing laypeople to tap on a site or an app or whatever.
Okay, no, that, that's a good suggestion. Oh, come on up.
Okay.
Yes, come on, come on.
No, come on.
Yeah, we, we, because you need to come up with a mic.
Thank you, I like when people talk, I get more comfortable. Um, and it probably won't, it's not exactly to what you're asking for semantic, but.
I know that's a good word.
But I learned a lot, because just recently, I've been, thank you to Hoikee, to Hoikee. I've been channel fifty-three and fifty-four on my phone or my laptop.
Yeah.
It's live, it's archived, I, I love it. And I've learned a lot, because I just recently listened to you, the, the council talk about, to the engineering department? That you folks are.
Last weekend, we had, we had an update on all of the capital improvement projects.
And I realize how much, yeah, there needs to be more communication with the departments. People are asking to have communication with you folks, but it's not, seems like the county departments aren't giving you answers.
Well, they, they give us answers when we ask, and.
But that's during a meeting.
Right, and that is the whole reason why we did the C I P update before the budget session, because
I appreciate.
The budget session is really limited in time.
Right.
You know, we gotta go through all the departments and we don't have a chance to really spend the time with the, uh, with the departments. So, this, because the C I P budget is a very huge expenditure in our county budget, that's why I wanted to do it prior to the budget. So now, they got to hear from us, we got to. that's why I wanted to do it prior to the budget. So, now, they got to hear from us, we got to see an update. And when the CIP budget comes up on the, uh, in our budget deliberations, we are hoping that we'll see some of the corrections that, that we had discussed, some of the projects that are not going to go. I will say that, because Pat is here, that the Parks Department, they do a really good job with uh, encumbering and executing the projects that they have in the CIP budget. I think more than any other department, I was very pleased to see, and I'm not just saying that because you're here, Pat, I, I was shocked, because oftentimes the Parks Department gets criticized a lot, but as far as the CIP projects, they're, when I saw the sheet, their projects are actually moving along. And, and I think that people gotta understand, and, and it's hard to, to accept, because, you know, we, we are such a, um, you know, we're not into delayed gratification, right? Human nature, we want it done now, and the process, the government process, it just takes a long time. And, and I understand that, but it's very hard when we put money on the side, and the projects aren't going to move as quick as we want to, and that money's tied up. And so, I think as we move forward, the communication, I think what, what, uh, are you related to Dr. Skema Horn?
Good cousins.
Yeah, yeah, I love him. He seemed like he already went to ER. He was, maybe he was the only ER doctor at the time, that's how old I am, yeah. Uh, but, but some kinda system like that where people could have access and, and know just by going to one place, I think that is, you know, it's, I, I, I can tell you that it'd be complicated to do, but I think
Once it's done, you will roll.
Correct. Correct. So.
Tia.
So.
But, yeah, I, I, Hoikei has the app now, so we can actually watch the, the things on your phone. And it's a good thing.
And I learned a lot. I, I'm just trying to give you feedback, that, the, the few that I started watching, and it's, I'm gonna keep doing it, you know.
I had two emails from people that watch our meetings regularly. And two different people emailed me to say that that's a capital improvement meeting, uh, capital improvement project meeting was the best meeting that they had ever watched at the county council.
It was a vacation of our need.
It was for us, too. It was for us, too.
So, the other things I wanted to bring up was that I agree with Joanne that it's, um, long overdue for the mer. Um, I have a suggestion in regards to, um, this island just needs, as a, a service, aborial training on island, aborial, you know, maintenance, your, the, uh, the highway, and it's not about so much, but I guess because it's state, you have to get state approval, but, um, in regards to learning from Lahaina fire, the, the electrical wires, all the, all the infrastructural communication wires and electrical trees have never been, um, maintained. And I don't understand how from the community college, or if the, the colleges wanna do it, that somehow the county doesn't have a service that has an ongoing island-wide, you know, maintenance service.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you that. The, the tree issue is a very, very tough one for me, because I think it's, uh, we do have a tree trimming crew, um, and I, I can just say we can do a much better job.
I have a question about, um, planning, uh, rezoning. I don't understand why, whatever infrastructure we already currently have for a commercial isn't used, um, if they're vacant, for housing also, as a mix, not just, just separated the way it's always been, where it's only commercial. Because before, just like Oahu, Honolulu, didn't they have the, the, um, whether it's the owner or the renter that has a business downstairs can live with, with, on the property if they have an upstairs, another adjacent?
That's what Rice Street did, you know, with the Tiger Grant, they, when they developed Rice Street, they changed, it's mixed-use density now, so you can have residential and commercial. And, you know, it's, who's gonna do it? That's the thing. I mean, I think right now, the cost, I think, is prohibiting a lot of people from doing that, because it's, what is it now, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars a square foot to, to build a structure? So, on Rice Street right now, all of those businesses have the ability to build residences on, on top, and have their businesses below. That, that was changed. And it's, I mean, you, you, we, it's available for people to do, but you gotta have the willing business people that, that's gonna invest that money to build the housing on top.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying about existing buildings.
Correct. Yeah.
Why do you have to build an addition when it's already there?
Well, I, there, the buildings are there, but they were not built with the residences on top.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. Isn't it just part of restructure, re, uh, repairing and, and installing?
That was the whole purpose of the Tiger Grant, that seventy million dollars that we spent on Rice Street, that was the whole purpose, was to re, re, basically reformat Rice Street to make it a walkable community that was going to encourage people to come in and business owners to, you know, put their employees on the top, or have, have housing units on top. That was the whole intent. The Tiger Grant was not a traffic grant, it wasn't about reducing the lanes.
Yeah, it just seems like.
Yeah, I know, but it's, it's, you know, you gotta have that willing business owner that's going to do that, right?
No. Why did they do this, the, the, the road?
That was the hope, right? That was the, the plan, because we, on the mainland, that's all you see. When you go into the, the cities and the towns, uh, that you'll see, the streets are filled with these beautiful buildings that have people living on top, and the shops on the bottom.
Well, Honolulu, did they have those kinds of?
Honolulu, yeah, and.
The mer, you know, and right now.
And I'll be honest with you, I, I'll be honest with you, I, I didn't support the Tiger Grant, I agree, because I, I, I knew it wasn't gonna happen.
Oh.
And I told the mayor at the time, "If you put that in Kapaa Town or in Honolulu Town, I would support it." Because I think that is where those towns were designed back in the day. Old Kapaa Town in Honolulu, you still see the, the apartments on top. I, I, I didn't think that it was gonna work here, and, and, you know, it is what it is, right? So, we, we, but, but the density, all of the zoning changes were done for Rice Street. The, the density was increased so that the people could, in fact, have some housing, um, mixed-use, housing and, and commercial. And it's just right now, no one's doing it. The county can do it. You know, that, that whole thing was meant for private business, private landowners to be able to do it. But yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I, I mean, I agree with you. And I think Honolulu and Kapaa are two towns that are ripe for that type of development. I do.
I, I guess I'll stop. Just, because I still have other questions.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think everyone, anyone else wants to, come on up.
I wanted to build on the communication piece as it relates to, um, any improvements or, um, decisions or implementation following Lahaina and our emergency manager. Because we're having monthly meetings with the community, with the Resilience Center, a lot of this gets discussed, and people do not understand or know what the county is improving upon, and particularly, um, our one-horn emergency system. Do, when the horn goes off, do I go Malka because there's a tsunami coming in, or do I go Makai because there's a fire coming down the mountain? So, it's, I suspect Kima and the county is doing things, but the population does not know what those things are. So, just another point of fact as it relates to communication, that that could just be on your guys' website as an update for emergency improvements, so that the, the people know. Because right now, if something happens, nobody knows where the hell they're supposed to go.
Yeah. We used to have Yellow Pages before, or the phone book, rather. You know, in the front of the phone book, you know, before, before we had, had these things, and now you just hit the contact. If, you, you go to the phone book, and it, and every area had a, had a tsunami, there was a tsunami map. But, you know, I, from a very young age, I was always taught, from, probably from elementary school, was if you hear the siren, you turn on your radio. Um, I was kinda surprised to hear the Maui guy say, "No, you know, I didn't wanna blow the siren, because if I blew the siren, everybody would think it was a tsunami, and they would run up to the fire." Right? That was weak. But it is what it is. Happened, it's done, and we get to learn from that now. And I've been watching the House and Senate committee meetings on YouTube, because they have it live, it's awesome. And a lot of the discussions during these budget hearings are really focused around, um, uh, Lahaina, and what have we learned? And, you know, it's up to us now, of Kima and, and everyone else, to really, uh, use what we've learned in Lahaina and adapt it to what we do here on Kauai. So, we'll, we'll definitely pass on that information, though.
To, may I speak to that point?
Absolutely.
Just like from the, from the perspective of radio, like when you wanna turn on your radio to learn what's happening, um, I've been reaching out to Kima or the mayor's office and say, "Hey, I'm here to give emergency information. I wanna do, um, uh, emergency preparedness campaigns, anything like that. Like, if something happens, turn on your radio." I can't get them to give me anything to put on the radio. Um, they, like, I wanna do special stuff so that we can tell everyone, and I wanna get it done before fire season. I wanna set it all up. But they, the response is, "You get our emails, right?" I'm like, "Yeah." But I get 'em, I get 'em a day later, like everyone else does. I'm, I've, I've got live DJs in the studio from seven AM till ten o'clock most times. I wanna get this stuff on the radio right now, and I can't get anyone to give me what to put on the radio.
Okay. Uh, you know, again, that, that's.
And that's not you, I know, but it's somewhat.
But, but, you know, it's, it's interesting, the timing, because we, we had a meeting today, in fact, Hoikei was in that meeting. Uh, and we talked about, you know, building this relationship between the county and, and our public radio TV stations. I mean, that's, I know Hoikei really wants to make an effort into creating a true community TV network, uh, TV station, and, and where Allegra, the, the new executive director, she is on fire. KKCR has been doing this forever. And, um, but that's a discussion we, we need to have with the administration as far as how can we utilize all the, the resources available? And it just makes sense to utilize the public radio and the public TV. It just makes sense. And, and if they're available, uh, then we should be using them just as we use the commercial radio stations.
I'm the new manager of KKCR, and Allegra and I talk frequently.
I just, I just, I just heard, well, Jimmy was telling me, so, that, I tell you right now, and I think the discussion we had today with our IT personnel, uh, just this morning, actually, I, he, he was very, 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 very supportive of building that relationship. So, I, I think it's just gonna get better. I, and we'll, we'll definitely, we'll have that discussion.
Are you, did you just say you have a new IT coordinator?
No, we had a discussion with the IT person, because we're trying to improve the system in this chambers. And part of that discussion was, uh, utilizing the KKCR and, and the Hoikei more. Like, we'd love to have KKCR here at our council meeting. And, you know, tonight was kind of like a trial run, I guess. This, this works, I don't know. I'm, I'm, can the heroes? I mean, yeah, I don't know. Is anybody listening on KKCR? Um, but that, that's, you know, it's, I've always believed that engagement by the community is what makes government better. That's just how it works. But, but if they're not engaging because they don't know, our, I mean, and I'll be honest, you know, we don't, our Garden Island newspaper doesn't cover the news here on Kauai as much as I would like. And Dennis Fujimoto does a great job covering the local sports and the, and the Happy Camper. I think people buy the paper just for the Happy Camper, you know? But when you lo, open up the paper, there's very, I should say, there's very little coverage on government. Kauai government. There's every other government, there's news about every other place on this, in this country, they take things off of the wire and they put them in the paper, but there's no real coverage of local government. And that is where Hoikei, KKCR can fill that gap.
Well, doesn't the government have press conferences?
Well, when.
Or a press release?
We have press releases, trust me. You get 'em.
You get the press releases?
Yeah. And the press releases are, but, you know, like our council meetings, for example, we're not gonna do a press release at, for a council meeting. Uh, and typically, in the old days, they would, they would have a reporter here, and the reporter would cover the council meetings. And then, then, on a Wednesday council meeting, on a Friday paper, you'd have, you'd have what was, what was going on. And we don't have that anymore. We don't have that anymore.
Wow, those people were volunteers. They're still volunteers.
But, so, my point is that if we can tap into the local public resources, then I think it just makes a better government.
It's gotta come from the government. It's gotta start there.
Yeah, I mean, like this, right here. I mean, this is going across the waves right now, TV, or video and, and audio, and I think we just need to have more of that. Yeah, we need to have more than that. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Come on up. Yeah, you gotta come up. You gotta come up.
I'm pretty old, that is, but. But, okay. I mean, this is quite gentle thinking.
Is it gentle? Yeah, no, and, and, yeah. I like the informality of this, because it's, it's just, people feel comfortable.
You get back to the housing situation. I know, we have an issue. You talked about Rice Street. What's going on with the big vacant building there right next to Rice Street that sits vacant, next, behind this hot coffee?
The old Crestor?
Yes. I mean, you had the old movie theater in Lihue, which they turned it into.
The church.
But there's housing.
Oh, Lihue, oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
They turned it into housing for elderly. Can you do something like that with that building that's sitting just there?
Well, we don't own the building, that's, that's the difference. So, the, the, the one on.
Maybe getting suggested, the owner is like, "Hey, parks inside there."
They have plans. I'm not sure what the plans are right now. They've been renovating that place for a very long time. Weinberg property, the Weinberg, the old Lihue Theater was Weinberg property. They, they basically transferred that lands over, uh, for it to be housing, and Crestor would be an awesome housing, uh, facility. It'd be a great shelter, to be honest with you, because it's, it's.
Cause it's central.
Yeah, and it's the, it's a very solid building. But, you know, it's, someone owns that building.
I know, but it just sits there here after a year.
I know. There's, there's, you know, I, I, I always thought we should.
Thank goodness there's a pretty painting mural thing on it now.
You know, it wasn't always that way. You know, Rice Street's trying very hard, Rice Street Business Association trying so hard to rejuvenate that place, and I, I just knew, because of the businesses that I had spoken to back then, when we were going through that grant process, that there, there was really no interest, because everyone was moving out towards the Kukui Grove, Hokule area. That's kinda gonna be like the second city, I think. I don't know. Everybody's moving over there.
I, I have actually tried to avoid Rice Street as much as possible.
But, you know, you, you, there, there's a, there's a lot of promise for Rice Street, but we, you know, you, and I think the council, I wasn't on the council at the time when they, when they did, increased the density and they changed the zoning. And I had hoped that that would have triggered some de, development, and it just hasn't, because it's, everyone's moving out. So, I'm not sure how it's gonna work, um, but it's, the, the incentives are there, the, the accomplishments. Thanks, Pat. Yeah. Thank you. And, um, you know, hopefully at some point, when the, when the market kinda corrects itself, and, and we can build stuff again for, you know, a hundred bucks, two hundred bucks a square foot, maybe then it'll entice business owners to do it. But right now, it's just, the cost is, is too much.
Okay. And the other thing is like Joanne said, I would like to have our own paved. Our subdivision is pushing thirty years old and never been resurfaced yet. The end of the road is pothole central, bumpy, bumpy, bumpy.
Um, the, the, the resurfacing list will come out for next year.
At least just fix it into the road.
Yeah, well, it's. Yeah, mine, too.
Just the end of the road, the be, the dips, the, the, where the car tires are okay, just maybe car a little boards to the right or a little, little left. But the end of the road, where there's just potholes, just been patched on top of patch, on top of patch.
Again, so if you have, again, those specific issues that, the, of specific areas, again, just let Alan on, and we'll make sure we get that across, just so we can.
That's it.
Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead.
This is, um, for information, I, I also checked with county council on this. There is in Poi Pu at the end of Mer, it's Spouting Horn. There's a big, um, building that the county bought, built, because all the the ware, the people who were selling their wares in the old days in front of Spouting Horn or Pal now, and they were gonna go into this building that the county built many years ago, and it is still not open. Would you explain that to me, please?
I can't explain it, but we'll definitely, that one we can, that one we can get an update.
Uh, I, I would really appreciate it, because nobody could give me an update last year.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
I really don't know. But we don't, you know, so, yeah, she'll, you'll give her answer. But we don't, you know, so yeah, she'll, you get her answer and then we'll, we'll shoot her a tweet, yes, please.
Thank you.
Councilman Reposo, I, I live in Anahola. And that space between the Anahola Beach Park and the Kapaha Beach Walk, that no man's land, creates a lot of problems. A lot of problems come out of there. And I know it's not county land, most of it, but it is within the county. And whoever owns it seems to be not responsible for what's going on back there. Somehow we have county laws that allow people to abandon vehicles. In any other place I've ever lived around the world, if you abandoned a vehicle, somebody within about thirty days knocks on your door and asks you, what do you do about this vehicle you've abandoned? Well, every couple of years, we have hundreds of them, hundreds of them abandoned between the Anahola Beach Park and the word walk there. I know it's not county land, but it is within the county.
Right.
It creates a lot of problems. Does the word abandoned car, dead body, burned out, or, or might have, uh, incident happened recently? What are we gonna do to stop having this happen year, I've been out here for eleven years, it's been going on for way longer than I've been here. When can the county go back there and patrol back there? And make sure we don't have all kinds of shenanigans, illegal activities? I know from, I lived just down the street, I get stuff stolen from my porch all the time. And it's not visitors doing it. It's probably people from that area.
Yeah.
And we're not doing anything about it, year after year. What are we gonna do about it now?
I, that's Hawaiian homelands back there and obviously that's private property, I mean, that's Hawaiian homeland. So, we, the, the county police not gonna go in there and, and, in fact, Hawaiian Homes has gone in there several times over the last decade or so and cleaned it out.
With all the people on the Hawaiian homelands list waiting for land and this mess is sitting there.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Why don't they do something about it? Or you, the county, make them responsible for not allowing this, this mess to have, to propagate back there.
Yeah, well, it'd be like if you had five cars on your lot.
Yeah.
There's nothing the county could do about that. I mean, it's, that's your property. I mean, trust me, I, I.
If there was a fire and a dead body in it, I think you'd be right there.
Well, I, I think it, it comes down to, again, it's a jurisdictional issue that Hawaiian Homes, they, they, that's their property.
Well, maybe we should develop a relationship with them so we don't have this problem.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I have, I have tried, you know, we're, I'm trying to get our legislature, because thi- this is the problem with abandoned vehicle law. Th- this is the real problem.
It's the taxes.
No, not, not the taxes, it's the fact that if you sell your car to somebody and, and you sell your car and the guy gives you three hundred bucks cash, this is a junker. And the guy buys the car, he drives off and he dumps it on the side of the road. He doesn't re-register the car. But when you sold the car, you did that little notice of transfer.
Yep.
That alleviates you from the responsibility of that car. And now, we don't know who the heck has the car. We, there's nothing, there's no consequence for the person that dropped it there. So, I'm asking the legislature, I've spoken to all of our representatives, uh, over the last several years, change the law, it's a state law, change the law and make the last registered owner responsible. So, if you sell a car to me, you and me going to DMV and I'm gonna sign.
That's right.
That's the only way we're gonna, because right now, there is no recourse. This notice of transfer garbage is, it doesn't work.
It costs the county a lot of money to get rid of these cars all the time, right?
Yeah, exactly. And in fact, we, that's why you, it's, you see so many of these cars on the road. Uh, back in the day, I used to be a police officer, when we came across an abandoned vehicle, we put an abandoned vehicle thing on the windshield. Twenty-four hours later, the county was towing that car. It was gone. They don't do that anymore. They, they go through this whole legal process that they, they back, they do the background, the research, who owns it? And no, you, you, if you leave your car on the side of the road, and even if it's legitimate, if you're not back in twenty-four hours to either tow it, if it's broken, or, then it's gone. But, but again, to me, I think if we change the state law to make the last registered vehicle responsible, then we can tow the car and then we can send the owner, the last registered owner, the bill.
Sure.
That's, that's, I think that's the root of the problem, right? Because then, right now, even on private property, right, there's no, there's no law that allows the county to go in private property to remove abandoned vehicles. And if it's a, if it's a private property and you want the car removed, you as the property owner has gotta pay for it. And the HHL has spent, gosh, probably millions of dollars over the, over the last fifteen years to, to clean that place up. And it doesn't take long, it's right back. I, I share your pain, man. I do. And, but I, I think you get rid of the root problem by, you, by analyzing the people that, that's actually responsible. That's just one of the things that we keep trying to.
Thank you.
You, thank you guys for coming. Yes, please. Man, you didn't wanna talk in the beginning, yeah? Now it's like, yeah. Good stuff, though. I, I appreciate this, I really do.
Well, people have brought up concerns and I, I just have to give them credit for it because I agree. Um, the other point that I was wondering, and I guess I'm asking you, uh, there's a lot of things I'm, I'm doing is, in my home, is to declutter. But I have a really hard time because I've already used the services of the monthly, um, the collection.
Mm-hmm.
That Salvation Army, but it's not an ongoing service. So, why isn't it that we don't have on island, a location where people can do a swap meet space? And I know that, um, the, uh, Veteran Center has, has that opportunity, but it's on a small scale? So, uh, I was just wondering why, I know lots of people have stuff that they, they wanna sell and clean their houses and do all kinds of.
My wife back there, so it's like, it's like, yeah, I tell her all day, we, we just do a huge garage sale and just have people come in. So, I like the idea of a community swap meet, like a, like a sunshine market.
Right.
I just never thought of that.
Well, well, you have facilities, like she brought up about Lihui, the Crestor, the old Crestor. And then I was thinking even, you know, those places that, why don't this, that, why don't they let? It doesn't have to be the whole island, but like, uh, the rummage sales that All Saints Church used to have. It, it's like, there are churches that do hold, the UCC Church in Hanapepe. But I need to remove furniture. And it'd be nice if I had a place that I could, like, bring it to for the vets or for the homeless or whatever. You know, instead of, I'm not gonna leave it on my, uh, outside.
Yeah.
You know, or the, the, or the dump. I don't wanna dump it. And then my last, my last, um, comment is, I see a lot of stuff, this is in regards to like this previous comment. A lot of stuff coming in at Costco. New furniture, new outdoor equipment, anything, right, at Costco. And I, I connected to our limited, um, Kekeha landfill. And I just go, wow, where's this, where, what's happening to this island? What's already, we're in a mess and yet we're still bringing in stuff? That's what all I have to say.
Good points, good points. And we have been in discussion with our, we have a, we have a new, uh, recycling coordinator that is, came in from the mainland. He's been here for probably, I don't know, six months now. But he, he comes with a lot of ideas about, uh, how can we stop the, this, all this excessive packing materials from the big boxes? And he's actually pretty brilliant. And so, he's working with, I think with Councilman DeCoste, I think, our Public Works Chair on, and I'm, I'm curious to see what comes up in the budget when they present to us on the plan for next year and how they're gonna address this. There's talk about legislation to making, you know, having these big box stores responsible for their, their own and they need to send it back.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's, there's a lot of options that he put on the table, which was, was really new to me. I mean, it's kinda common sense, but I, you know, it's just, like I said, you don't know what you don't know, right?
He's a county employee?
Yes, he's a county employee. Yeah, yeah, he is a county and he's, like, he's brilliant, actually. But he, you know, he comes from a place where they had all these things in place.
Right, 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 right.
We just never did, right? We, it's now because we're at a crisis level out at Kekeha.
Well, let's not take too long to get it, that's all.
I know, I know. I, I really like your idea of the community rummage sales because I think a lot of people like us have stuff that we would like to get rid of. And I think, I'm just thinking of the stadium. If we use the stadium parking lot and we do it just like a sunshine market, but you could bring your truckload of things that, that could be reused, whether you sell it or give it away or whatever you wanna do, but just keep it out of the dump.
So.
I think that's brilliant.
Schedule it, okay?
Well, I, I, I mean, we'll, we'll definitely have that discussion.
Take too long.
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What was your name? Which one was you?
Joan.
Joan, okay, Joan.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, guys. Anything else? Nothing else? Yvette, do you have anything that you wanna? Is Addison at Luke's thing?
Yes, he is.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Yvette. Um, something I would like to see in the county is more farm to school. I know that was a initiative that happened last year. Um, but my son goes to Honolay Elementary and the food he eats is pretty awful and high in sugar. And I've seen pictures from Waimea High School, Kapaa High School. And it's just something I really think we could improve because there's so much fresh food that's grown here. There's even a lot of school farms. And so, I question, how come we can't use the school farm food in the school?
You know, Waimea High School has probably the best food, the farm to school program in the state. I don't know if you've been out there.
I have.
They have an amazing farm program that the kids all work. And they have the foods from the farm, um, is what is being used for their school lunches.
No, they can't. They can't actually use that, all that stuff they grow, they cannot use in their school lunch.
Really?
Yeah.
I went out there and maybe things have changed, but I went, I went out there. Well, again, it was probably five years ago.
Yeah.
When, that's when they were doing it. And it was, like, it was on the news and.
Right, it might, it might have been a temporary initiative, but now it has gone back and they're eating Doritos. Like, that, they're not eating their farm food. Cause I, I teach out there, actually, in Waimea High School.
Okay.
So, I, I talk to the students, they, they took pictures of their food.
They're not, they don't have the, the farm?
They have the farm and they all.
The farm to food, they don't, the farm to school, they don't have that anymore?
They don't have it anymore. So, it's just an initiative I would like to see more in our county of how can we get our children eating, how, you know, stuff that's grown here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can work with our staff. We can definitely, I, I was not aware of that. I, and I thought that was going to be the model for the state. I really did. I was so impressed. I went out there and I watched these kids working in a farm. It was just amazing to see.
It's a super awesome farm. They have the resources, but they're not allowed to.
They're not allowed to use it in a school. Wow. Okay. Wow, okay. We definitely will look into that. That's interesting. Anything else? We got five minutes left. You guys are really good on time.
Thanks for having us.
Well, thanks for coming. Yeah, I know, it's, it's just, it's not very convenient to have to come out of your house at five thirty in the afternoon, but.
But it's, it's not as scary as coming to a full meeting.
Yeah.
And, and it can give people, laypeople like me, an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, and it's informal. It's informal. I thought about wearing a T-shirt, but my wife, I knew my wife was coming, so I said, I gotta put on the. Well, Friday, we'll be at Kapaa Neighborhood Center. Um, for those of you that are listening and watching, if you guys are in the Kapaa area, again, this is being broadcast live on KKCR. Thank you so much, KKCR. I hope you guys will be on there on Friday.
I hope so.
Okay, and then, of course, Hoi Ke, uh, thank you for doing this. And, and those of you watching, again, uh, council, my email is just mreposo, very simple, mreposo@kauai.gov. Take the first initial and last name of all the council members. That's the, @kauai.gov and you can get to us. Council testimony@kauai.gov comes to all of us. So, if you wanna just shoot an email to everybody, you can just shoot it out to council testimony. Or I think council members, councilmembers@kauai.gov will come to all of us as well. But we encourage you guys to stay engaged and, uh, hopefully we see you guys out there on Friday. So, if there's nothing else, thank you again. We appreciate you guys being here tonight and, uh, we'll see you guys on Friday night. Thank you very much.